All right, it is 4:00 PM and we're going to get started with our work session. September 19, 2023, and this is the City of Iowa City. Our first item is the joint meeting with the Airport Commission to discuss new airport strategic plan. And welcome to you. And welcome to our commissioners.
Good afternoon. If you haven't met me before, I'd be surprised, but I'm Michael Tharp. I'm the Airport Manager. We've got a few of our members of the Airport Commission with us. A couple more are still in transit. But we've got our Chair, Elektra Erasco, Secretary Chris Lawrence, and Ryan Story is our newest member to the Airport Commission. We just wanted to walk through the strategic plan that we put together, kind of highlight some of the things, especially some of the things that also correspond to some of the Council's strategic plan goals. And I'm going to turn it over to the Commission members, and I'm just going to stand here and run the slideshow.
Well, thanks for having us.
Well, welcome to all of you.
If you've looked through the strategic plan at all, you'll note that we have a goal, which is sustain strong communication and collaboration with the City Council, City Administration, and other city departments. This was on our last strategic plan. We kind of fell short. So we presented basically the high-level view of the strategic plan, the last version, in a comments, the public comment section of the agenda at a City Council meeting. And then after that, we didn't really do much with it. So we put it back on the strategic plan, and this is part of that. So we're glad to be able to do this and kind of walk through this in a little bit more detail and answer any questions you have. So we'll just kind of look at the vision and mission statements. The vision statement was pretty unaltered. We were pretty satisfied with it. "The Iowa City Municipal Airport is an integral community asset that supports the strategic goals of the City of Iowa City and benefits the region's commerce vitality and community pride." We felt pretty strongly that this was pretty much in line with what we wanted the airport to be five years ago, and it still holds true today. With the Department of Transportation, the Iowa Department of Transportation's publication every so often showing how much airports contribute to the local economic activity, we felt that was a very strong characteristic of the airport. So we put commerce on there. We like to think that there is vitality that comes from the airport. We certainly have events and community gatherings at the airport, and we're looking to expand those. And then community pride. We want people to acknowledge that we have a really, a really unique thing, which is a small community airport that can be leveraged by everybody close to the heart of downtown, that allows people to access the great things about this city that all of us love. The mission statement is that "The Iowa City Municipal Airport, directed by the Airport Commission, provides a safe, cost-effective general aviation facility. The airport creates and enriches economic, educational, healthcare, cultural, and recreational opportunities for the greater Iowa City community." And then we had four goals this round. The first was increase the community's use and understanding of the airport. Second is develop airport infrastructure to support growing airport uses. The third one is continue to develop funding mechanisms for airport operations, improvements, and maintenance. And then the last goal is sustain strong communication and collaboration with the City Council, City Administration, and other city departments, as I mentioned before. So we had a number of engagements with Regina Bailey to create this strategic plan. And I want to quickly highlight some of the details associated with each of those goals and dive into them a little bit, and then offer my fellow Commission members any opportunity they want to interject here. So with respect to increasing the community use and understanding of the airport, we really wanted to make the airport a community place. We wanted to bring people to the airport. The goal behind that is that if we bring people to the airport, they'll have an understanding of what it does for the community. They'll see what value there is in having a small airport or having accessibility to a small airport. And then it also just encourages the use of public property, and it's an opportunity for people to gather, to gather and come together as a community. And so some of the things that we're looking to do are hosting more aviation organization events, which we already do today. So one of the good examples that I can think of off the top of my head is EAA Young Eagles. So generally speaking, every year, COVID notwithstanding, there's an organization, the Experimental Aircraft Association. They will offer opportunities for children to go flying in airplanes with a pilot, obviously, and kind of experience aviation. It's done at no charge to the kids or their parents. It's an opportunity for a big aviation organization in the country to share aviation with children and sort of foster that spark in kids, because frankly, kids love airplanes. So doing more sorts of things like that, right? We want to continue giving tours to people who are interested in aviation careers. Mike and others at the airport have given tours to a number of aviation-related groups. It could be students at local community colleges. It could be high school students, whatever, who have an interest in aviation careers. And then finally, airport tours to just interested community groups. And I think that there have been a number of tours for various groups that aren't necessarily affiliated with aviation at the airport over the years. So continuing to do that. I would really like to highlight here the, some of the continued partnerships that we have. So you may have seen banners around town for the Pancake Breakfast that's hosted each year. That's done by the Optimist Club?
Correct.
Okay. And so that's something that we do every year. We try to make happen for them every year. They run it, but we collaborate with others and make space available. And I think Mike said that he wouldn't have been surprised if there were 5,000 attendees over the course of the morning. Is that what you said?
Yeah, this was one of the better populated years we've had in recent memory.
Yeah, so it brings a lot of people out to the airport, and it gives the airport operators a chance, people who operate at the airport, a chance to showcase what they do and what they bring to the community. And the other one is the Summer of the Arts movie night. That was something I believe started with COVID, and we've continued that partnership. So they project a movie on the side of the hangar. People, it's basically a drive-in movie theater, and it gets people out to the airport, but it also makes use of the space in a non-aviation way. Develop airport infrastructure to support growing airport uses. I think this one's fairly self-explanatory. Airport is, it is infrastructure. So we need to continue to maintain that infrastructure. If it crumbles, then, you know, everyone kind of suffers. So we're looking at the, we have an airport space needs study, which I think in the notes you provided, Mike, you're really talking about the terminal study in that case. So we're undergoing a terminal study that's going to look at the building and the landside airport property to determine what are our next steps here. Because it's been pretty static for decades at this point. So how can we sort of vitalize, revitalize that area? We have a solar power project that we're really, really happy to get going. You know, it's, sustainability is really hard with an airport. You can't get away from the fact that in aviation, carbon-based fuels have an energy density that you just can't compete with fuel. Fuel will always, well, at least in my lifetime probably, have more energy per mass than a battery will, right? Electric aviation is coming, but aviation moves slowly. It's governed by federal regulations that are slow to change and adapt. And so we have to look at the ways that we can become more sustainable. One of the ways that we've looked at that is any of our runway projects where they have to redo the lighting, change it to LED, right? Massive reduction in energy usage compared to very, very bright incandescent lights. So we've done that on our main runway. One of the projects coming up is our effectively north-south runway. It's going to have new lighting. It's going to be LED. The taxiways are already LED. The only thing that will not be LED as far as airport lighting on the airside is concerned is the rotating beacon, which we're talking about, but that one's a little more tricky. So that reduces our energy usage. Solar power certainly helps with that. And then, you know, yes, we are still bound by hydrocarbons, but the entire aviation industry is, and they're working on solutions, but we can't, we as an airport can't solve that problem, right? So we're trying to do what we can. Hangar development, we've invested a lot in receiving state grants for concrete pads on the south end of the airport to allow people to build hangars and tie into the existing taxiway infrastructure. So we're looking to meet the demand that we have there. We've had a running list, a waiting list for hangars for as long as I've been at the airport, and I don't think that'll change anytime soon. So we're trying to meet the demand, but grants for hangars themselves are very hard to come by. So that's not really an option for us. And then one thing that's really near and dear to my heart is we'd like to pursue trying to get pedestrian access along Riverside Drive to the airport. I've been on the Airport Commission now for five, six years. In the summer and spring and fall, I would love to ride my bike from southeast Iowa City to the airport to go to a Commission meeting. But it would be taking my life into somebody else's hands to drive my bike or ride my bike on Riverside. So while I'm here, I would love to pitch the idea that we'd love to do it. And as part of our terminal study, we're looking at more bike access. We're looking at, you know, how could we tie into the existing infrastructure? But unfortunately, we don't have a lot of good ways to get to the airport that don't involve a car. And so we would love to try to work on that with the City Council, with other departments, and see where we can meet in the middle and try to get a bike path, or at the very least a pedestrian path on the side of Riverside. And then, I forget, Warren isn't here, but I believe he mentioned that even more dangerous is the Highway 1 Riverside intersection. I think it's Highway 1 still at that point. Maybe it's Highway 6. Where were the, where the old bus service, transportation service building?
Highway 1, Highway 6, it changed, yeah.
Yeah. That intersection as a pedestrian is a death trap. So, you know, if you're coming from that direction, we have no good way to get to the airport as pedestrian or bicyclist. So we want to continue to develop funding mechanisms for airport operations, improvements, and maintenance. One thing that we're really, really proud of over years of hard work is that we finally got the operational budget effectively off of the city's books. There was a period where it was really hard to, it was really hard to run the airport without city help. And we've worked at that over many years. Obviously, you still do grant matching. That's great. That really helps us because a lot of our grants are 90% match, I think the state maybe 85%?
The state, depending on the program, is anywhere from 75 to 85%.
Yeah, so we, those sorts of capital improvements, we really appreciate the grant matching. It brings a lot of money into the city for some of these projects. But the operational budget largely comes from fuel sales and hangar rents and other sorts of agreements, like agriculture leasing agreements. Our use of the Community Foundation Fund for donations. One of the things you might have seen if you've been near the airport in the past couple weeks is that we managed to secure funding for a public art mural on the hangar that faces Riverside. And it sort of tells the story of the airport through depictions of aircraft through the years, whether that's Post-Mail, or I think Niall Kinnick's F4 from World War II is on there. It's just been a fantastic partnership with an artist from the Des Moines area, and we were able to collect donations, use the community fund to do that, and, you know, contribute to the public art mission that I think a lot of people really like to see around here. I certainly like to see it. It makes a boring hangar look really neat. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, I don't know if she's done yet.
Not quite. She's got a little bit more to work on, and that also had a contribution from the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Yes, it did. Yep. So it's been, that was a really nice, I was really happy to see that project through. And Judy sitting across the way, she was heavily involved in that as well, working with the Public Art Group and helping us navigate that. And then finally, increase fuel flowage fees. We have had, our fuel flowage fees have been static for a very long time, and we recently looked to increase the cost of fuel per gallon. That brings some additional revenue into the airport. Our budget's been pretty flat. We don't, with not a lot of room to, not a lot of room to start to look at some of the things that we would like to do. It's always been the things we have to do. So this should hopefully give us a little bit more breathing room, build up the savings, and kind of work from there. And then lastly, sustain strong communication and collaboration with City Council, City Administration, and City Departments. We're obviously doing that today. We're trying to walk you through our strategic plan, show you what we're about, give you the chance to ask questions. But we really want to continue working with other city departments. That's been quite beneficial, I think. We've been working with the Parks and Rec Department. They helped us with some of the landscaping in the front, I believe. There's been a lot. There's been a lot that they've helped us with.
Yeah, Parks and Rec has been a great help. Landscaping out front, helping with tree control, things like that. We work with streets on occasion for assisting in some pavement repairs. Public Works helped us with the parking lot additions. Yeah.
Yeah, there's been a lot of collaboration with other city departments that I don't think in the past we necessarily knew were available to us to partner with. I think we always kind of thought that we were off on this little island, and the truth is, we're not. But it's been, it's been a good partnership. So we want to continue doing that. We want to continue exploring collaborative efforts with others and play nicely with everyone, so. Aside from that, I don't think we had anything really prepared aside from going through the plan. Are there any questions that you have for us, or anything that you, any feedback you have?
Well, I appreciate you kind of walking us through this. Lots of good things, I think, happening over at the airport, some of the things that were mentioned already. What I do appreciate is the Commission taking some time to step back and look at their strategic plan while also looking at the city's five-year strategic plan. I was happy to come and speak to you all about our strategic plan. One of the questions that, well, one of the things I was happy to hear about is more access for community events, or maybe being more intentional, I think is where you all were going with that. I love the idea of having the, is it EEA, bringing children to learn about aviation? I've heard that aviation, as far as like pilots, we're needing more. And so I think more exposure is great. The one thing I would recommend, just as a side note, for educational opportunities, I know that there are cars that will be flying pretty soon. So it'd be great to maybe have an educational piece about that, what that looks like. Surprisingly, I was, there was one that was about $300,000, which I thought, that's, you know, when you think about a plane, how expensive that is. $300,000 for a flying car is a good deal. But I also learned that you had to be, you have to have a pilot license of some sort, which, count me out, I don't think I can do that. But yeah, I think having it more open to the community, having some fun opportunities for people to come out, to hear about this, about the airport and aviation is going to be great.
Yeah, and one of the things that was, I'm the most veteran member of the Commission at this point, but one of the initiatives that we undertook was building the viewing area that we have at the airport. So a lot of airports have viewing areas, so you can go watch the airplanes, and they'll have like a sign that kind of shows what you're looking at. And we went through the process of building that. We have a little paved concrete runways in the ground that, you know, kids can play around in and see like how the airport's laid out. But that really speaks to like how we really want to bring people to the airport, because it is an airport. There's actually things to see related to aviation at the airport. It's not, it's not off limits. You don't have to go through TSA checks to come to our airport. You don't have to, you can go and see aviation, you know, pretty raw and unfiltered if you'd like. And so that kind of highlights the priority that we have about getting people to the airport because it's, it can be a cool place to go to. So yeah, exactly to your point.
You bring in a flying car, and you'll have 20,000 people in one day, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I think it's an excellent strategic plan, and I do find the pancake breakfast, as you were saying, the airport is so accessible, and it's in a relatively small town. You're not going to be able to have a pancake breakfast at a larger airport. I just love the fact that that's possible here. And I actually spoke with someone who was from a larger city and said she brought her kids to the airport for the pancake breakfast, and no way could they do that in Washington, DC, and, you know, without 45 minutes driving through traffic to get there. So yeah, I think it's kind of exciting how you're taking advantage of what you are and using it to its maximum.
I actually had a couple, just kind of clarifications or would love a little bit deeper dive. You talked about the upcoming, some infrastructure improvements and looking at the upcoming, for the, blanking on the words, sorry, word-finding issues. The main, not the hangar, but...
Terminal?
Thank you, terminal. Geez. Anyway, so yes, if you could talk a little bit more about that, why you're looking into it, how far along that process is, if you have some idea of where that's going to head, I'd love to learn more about that.
Yeah, so the terminal study is really just looking at, looking at the terminal building, seeing if it will meet the needs or is meeting the needs of the airport right now. That study is being done with a grant. Is that an FAA grant, Mike? So we had an FAA grant to do that. And so we're working with our engineering firm and looking at how much square footage do we need to meet airport needs? What do we have today? And kind of looking at what are the building, what are the building parameters that we can, we can use and adjust to meet the future needs of the airport? Because the building itself dates from the 1950s, if I remember correctly.
1953.
Yeah, and we love that building, but it has, we have, we are absolutely at capacity. And so as we need to, as we adjust and try to meet the needs of the aviation community and also the public at our airport, I think we're finding that we're quite cramped in how could we, how could we expand it and make use of the space? So we're in pretty nascent stages there. We just finished getting basically what the options were from our engineering firm. We've gone through some public comment and survey work, and so that's pretty much where we're at now, right?
Yeah, I would expect the Council's going to see some more information in the CIP presentations coming up this fall as part of the budget process. As Chris said, we're kind of wrapping up our space needs study. We know we have a space deficit. One of the examples I use is we have six flight instructors sharing a single office. You know, we need space for those lessons to be taking place, that classroom learning, which is basically a one-on-one process between instructor and student. And when you have six groups of people trying to use the same office, it does make scheduling and getting people through training a bit difficult. So there's some things there. Growth with the FBO in terms of their staffing, you know, over the last 10 years, they've gone from roughly 30 people to about 50 people just within the facility. And that's pilots, that's mechanics, that's office staff, line staff that are the folks dealing with the airplane. So when an airplane comes in, they're moving airplanes around, fueling them up, things like that. So we have, we definitely have space needs. We're trying to figure out how best to resolve those issues. And like I said, I expect to have more information with the CIP process.
What about demand for hangar space? Is that at capacity? Do we have capacity left? Is that something else?
As far as what we have now, we are at capacity. We have a waiting list on paper that's roughly about 40 entries deep. I went through a two-year period, because I keep all of my notes of when hangars turn over, when I offer them. I went through a two-year period where I had zero hangars turnover to go back into a rental cycle. So yes, we definitely need hangar space. Making the money work is something that is the issue right now because building prices are so outrageous, especially when it comes to steel material. And what we've done in kind of lieu of trying to build ourselves is we're extending that infrastructure out into areas where other people can build and then lease ground from the airport and spur construction that way.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate your attention to the appearance of the airport, the entrance and along Riverside Drive and the detail. And I think together, it sounds like with Parks and Rec. And I would encourage you, if you haven't, I know Willow Creek Park, the Master Gardeners take a big part of that. I don't know if you've worked with them or not in as far as foliage and flowers and those kinds of things to make it really appealing. Because the only thing I remember from 50 years on up coming into town here is the old jet at the front entrance, and that was kind of the main appeal to the airport. And it's still there, obviously, of course. So I assume your plans are to continue to have that there and maintain that, as best you can. And then, but continue with Parks and Recs and Master Gardeners, whoever, to really make it, and we'll do what we can, hopefully. I don't want to promise anything about sidewalks, but that would help too, so, for you.
Yeah, we're certainly taking a look at the whole entrance drive leading into the terminal as part of this study. I think we're going to come up with a plan of how things change and how that pedestrian access, you know, should it come down Riverside Drive where it comes into the airport and feeds closer to the terminal building. So looking forward to a lot of, a lot of things coming out.
Thank you all so much for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, and wish you the rest, awesome and amazing rest of the day.
Thank you very much.
Come visit us.
Yeah, come visit.
All right.
Will do.
All right, we're going to go to our next agenda item, number two, which is 2023 Capital Improvement Project Updates, and welcome.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson. I get to start tonight by updating you on the progress of our projects that have been happening throughout the park system this summer. This is the most exciting time of year, well, maybe the second most exciting, most being when we kick off the projects, but we're getting close on finishing several of them. So I'll run through those very quickly for you. Hickory Hill Park is the first one up. That's the north entrance, the Conklin Street entrance. And you can see the picture on the right. It is under construction as we speak. The Ramchek Shelter materials are all onsite, so they say it'll be only a two- or three-week process now that they're actually building and some of the cement is in the ground. I didn't see the shelter yet, so that may be a little further delayed, but it looks like they are well underway there. Next, we have Happy Hollow. And this one, let's see, the picture didn't change. Okay, well, the picture will come up hopefully soon. Happy Hollow, the baseball field has been renovated and the pathways are in place. The playground equipment is here. We're having to do a little re-engineering on site to make it fit on the site. So it should be in yet this fall, but probably not in the next couple of weeks. It's one that our staff is putting in. We then go to Hunter's Run on the far west side. This playground was one of the first ones done this summer. It has been played on for most of the summer. There's still just a little bit of seating work to be done there, but in general, that project is complete. Willow Creek Trail replacement, same thing. It's almost done. A little bit of seating work, a little bit of finish work throughout. That's been a very smooth project, and that provides a whole new paved, a replacement paved trail throughout Willow Creek and into Kiwanis Park. Tennis court renovations along with pickleball renovations. You approved that contract at your last council meeting, so that will be underway soon this fall. We gave them an extended date through July 15th to finish the work next summer. So hopefully, they will remove the current courts yet this fall at the end of the season and be back first thing in the spring with putting the new courts in and be ready to play by 4th of July. Mercer Park Baseball Diamonds, project has changed a little bit since we first talked about it. The school district is a partner in that project. They have decided they will likely move their varsity softball team to this facility as well as a varsity baseball, which is already there. So that has backed us up a little bit on design. So that has backed us up a little bit on design work. We're taking a step back, working more with the school district to determine what that means for the overall project site. There'll still be a lot of ADA and, and improvements throughout the public areas of that. And we've gone ahead with the purchase of the new lights. So we'll get new LED lights on Field One. Those have been ordered and should be here about the first week in November. Kiwanis Playground, the site is ready. The playground is manufactured in Germany, so it cleared customs yesterday and is on a truck from South Carolina as we speak. We got pictures this morning, I was so excited, I sent them to Jeff. Turns out the ones they sent us are actually going to Clive, not our playground, similar, but they sent us pictures later in the day that ours are also on a truck on the way here. So that one is being installed by the contractor and should be installed and finished yet this fall. City Park Pool Replacement, how exciting. Glad that we made a decision, that you made the decision at the last meeting to move on with the replacement. So the next steps, we, staff met with the consulting team on Monday of this week to talk about dates for the next steps. We are headed towards Friday, October 27th as the date for the first big open house meetings. It'll probably be a two-part meeting with a meeting in the afternoon at Mercer Scanlon Rec Center and then moving to Robert A. Lee at 5:30, so it coincides with the big Halloween event. We'll have about 1,000 people coming through for the Halloween event, families and kids. So we want to capture their information and their ideas on the pool. And just so you can start letting the public know, the first open house meeting is just a project introduction meeting. There'll be chances for people to come in and give their preferences on a number of different ideas for the pool. There isn't however, any kind of presentation because there isn't anything yet to present about. This is simply information gathering for people's preferences and things they'd like to see. So people can think of it as a stop-in, meet the consultants, go around the room, do different activities to give their input into what that will look like. The other thing that will be happening is around October 1st, we'll have a page on the website go live for the project with all the information on it. And that's where people who are interested can sign up to be a part of one of the focus groups. And we'll have up to 14 focus groups, which will be 45-minute sessions. They're going to happen November 13th, 14th, and 15th. So what that means is during the month of October, we'd like as many people as possible to go on the website page. They'll fill out an online form with all kinds of information so we get a sense of which groups they might be eligible for. The names will be removed from that list as we talked about before. Then the, they will be randomly chosen based on the criteria for each one of those different specialty groups and invited in for those 45 minutes. We're looking for all kinds of ways to lower the barriers for those groups, so we're likely hosting it at Mercer Scanlon and then having childcare available if needed. They'll be in the evenings, interpreters if needed. We're, we're working through all of those details right now. But the main thing is around October 1st, the project page should be available on the website so people can start tracking everything that's happening. That's also where there'll be a special email for comments and input onto the project, into the project that can come from that. October 27th, again, Friday, October 27th will be the first big open house. And you have until the end of October to sign up for one of those focus groups. And then we'll move forward with all that information going into those three schematic designs that you probably won't see till mid to late January, when they would go back out for the statistically valid survey. So lots are happening behind the scenes, moving that forward, bringing all that information out to the public. We have a full-scale marketing plan happening with all of that too. All right, so those are just the park projects and their updates. Any questions on any of those?
Real quick, I might be confused by this. The pickleball and tennis courts, is that, is there also one going on at City Park? Or is it, so in addition to the one that's going to happen at Mercer?
At Mercer, it's the pickle, there's pickleball tennis courts there. That's been completely torn up and rebuilt. And then at City Park, it's tennis courts. And then a base, or basketball field, or, sorry, tennis courts. And a basketball court right next to it, those will both be rebuilt as part of the process. The City Park ones will remain tennis courts primarily, will have pickleball lines there, but primarily tennis.
Will those two, the Mercer and the City Park tennis courts, will those overlap, those replacement projects?
Happen at the same time, yeah. Same, same company probably doing them both at the same, same time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn over engineering for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Jason Hubble, City Engineer. So I'm going to talk about some of the projects that are impacting the right-of-way at this time. Full disclaimer that this is not all the projects we're working on, but it's really those that are more significant or have more significant impacts in the right-of-way or, or to the traveling public. So want to start things off with the 2023 Annual Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Just a reminder, this includes both our asphalt overlay program and our PCC patching program. On the asphalt side of things, we have a few sites this year, the first one being Court Street, east of Scott Boulevard. It'd be roughly between Elmira and Kenneth. We'll be doing an asphalt overlay for that section. We'll also be doing the railroad crossing on Gilbert Street, the south crossing just north of Napoleon Park. That's one that is certainly in need of, of repair as well, so we're doing that this year. And then finally, we'll be chip ceiling, taffed, which is something we do more or less every year to maintain that surface. On the PCC side of things, we just recently talked about First Avenue, so that'll be the main project there. They're looking at starting that actually next Monday with completion planned for mid to late November for that PCC patching, the asphalt overlay, and, and that stuff will be completed by the end of the year as well. Rare South Sewer, so this is the new trunk sewer that's going in along Abbey Lane and as, as well as extending under Highway 218. The sewer work is well underway. They've installed all the sewer essentially from the east end of the project near Kiwanis Park, under Mormon Trek Boulevard. So we've made it through our closure of Mormon Trek Boulevard and that is back open to traffic. They are now working on finishing kind of the west end of the project, which will include installing that sewer under Highway 218. They anticipate that contractor starting that work here in the, probably the next few weeks, looking at getting that sewer work done yet this year is the plan. As they are working on extending that sewer, we're also going back and installing the, connecting the services to the, the new pipe, and then they'll work on paving after that. So they've already started some of the paving operations and plan on having that done this year as well. Highway 6 Trail, so this is a, a new 10-foot trail on the south side of Highway 6 from Fair Meadows to Heinz Road. The trail is more or less complete and, and used. Really all that's left there is some restoration and some minor grading and seating work to occur yet this year. Riverside Drive Pedestrian Path, so this is in that section between Benton Street and Myrtle Avenue. So this will be providing a, a pedestrian connection under the Iowa Interstate Railroad along the west side of Riverside Drive. It includes not only the pedestrian connection, but also will include some utility work in Riverside Drive as well as some lighting along the west side there for pedestrian use. The utility work has been completed. We anticipate the barrier, the barrier is completed as well, anticipate the sidewalk connection underneath the railroad to get wrapped up here probably by the end of October. The lighting will be delayed until next year. The main reason there is just the lead time on getting those materials. And then all that will be left then would be the temporary sidewalk connection essentially from the railroad or the end of our project to Myrtle Avenue. That's being done with the development that's occurring in that area, that separate connection. We're working with them to get that scheduled, hopeful that'll be done yet this year as well.
And how long, how wide is that sidewalk again?
I think the sidewalk, five feet for, I, I know the, the part that goes under the railroad is as narrow as four feet, and really that's, we had to narrow up the road to get there and that's really all we could get. But I believe it's at least five feet for the rest of it.
So there's a retaining wall there. That retaining wall we're seeing in the image is a barrier protecting-
Pedestrians, correct. Yep, yep. Sorry, it's six feet sidewalk along Riverside Drive there. But it will narrow down to four feet right at the, the abutment because we just couldn't change that.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Rochester Avenue Reconstruction, obviously this is a big one. This is completely reconstructing Rochester Avenue essentially from Ralston Creek through First Avenue. This is one that began last year. They are continuing construction there. We're just about done with Phase Two and be moving into Phase Three with the plan to have Phase Three done this year. So that'll get us up to just short of the First Avenue intersection. That'll be new pavement, new public utilities, all that kind of stuff. So the plan is then to have Rochester Avenue open for the winter, to, so open to traffic for the winter. They'll come back in the spring and they'll work on the First Avenue and Rochester intersection. The plan is to do that half at a time. So we'll maintain traffic through the intersection throughout the, the remainder of construction next year. As far as final completion date, we're probably looking at the fall of 2024 for final completion. Fairchild Street Reconstruction, so this is the reconstruction of two blocks of Fairchild Street, which is a brick street. So this is essentially from Clinton to Lynn. This is nearing completion. I think we're looking at having that wrapped up probably end of October. So it includes not only the brick street, but some utility work there as well. American Legion Road Reconstruction, so you may remember this was taking American Legion Road, reconstructing it, converting it from a rural cross-section, so a roadway with ditches to an urban cross-section to include not only storm sewer, but also bike lanes and a curb and gutter and all of those things. That project is more or less complete. They're working on finishing up punch list items and some restoration work, looking at having that complete yet this year. And then finally, in this section, Benton Street, so this is a crack and seat and overlay project that will go from Mormon Trek Boulevard to just short of Greenwood Drive. The west part of the project is, is more or less complete, so that'd be the section essentially from Mormon Trek to just short of Sunset. They're working on the Sunset intersection now, looking at having that completed probably by the end of October. As part of that, then they'll also do the crack and seat and overlay for the east section as well. So I would say that it'd be substantially complete, if not by the end of October, certainly by the end of the year. The next section, I was just going to mention, these are projects that are, are really not under construction yet, but there's either been some recent interest or we anticipate here in the very near future, you'll see some, some items for these projects. Sorry. The first one here is Dubuque Street Reconstruction. So this is the block from Washington Street to Iowa Avenue. Be a complete reconstruction, similar to what we had done with Washington Street a few years ago. It will also include the reconstruction of the alley between Washington and Iowa and then between Dubuque Street and Lynn Street. This one, I would say you will see here probably if not your next meeting, probably the meeting after, we're looking at hopefully getting this project bid by the end of the year. Court Street Reconstruction, this is, again, will be a, a pretty significant one. This is the reconstruction of Court Street from Muscatine Avenue to First Avenue. Again, it'll be a complete reconstruction of not only pavement, but utilities and, and all of that stuff. Currently, there's been some gas relocation work out there. Obviously it's been, if you've driven through there, you've probably seen it recently. We anticipate that next year we will do the relocation of the remainder of the utilities. So a lot of the communications, electric, that kind of stuff will be relocated next year. And then construction of the actual project would begin in 2025. North Gilbert Street Reconstruction, this is one, I think a couple of meetings ago, we had talked about approving property acquisition for this project. Just wanted to update you and let you know that we actually have our second public meeting tomorrow night at Mann School. The plan is then for finishing up design probably this winter time or, or spring of 2024, utility relocations in 2024, and then actual reconstruction in 2025. And then finally, the Gilbert Street Bridge Replacement Project, this is one that we had previously bid, didn't get any bids. We rebid it and bids were actually due today. So we did receive apparently three bids, so we are working through those, the evaluation of that and hope to have a, a recommendation for you at your next meeting. So that, again, that will be the replacement of the Gilbert Street Bridge over Ralston Creek as well as some utility work and the stream bank stabilization kind of work too. So that is what I had. Any questions for me?
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's really helpful with all of those projects going on. And I know whether in the street or by email, sometimes we get contacted, and so this is really helpful to get this update. So thank you for that.
Good.
Awesome. And that is it, no one else. All right. We're going to move on to item number three, clarification of agenda items. And Counselor Dunn, I want to make sure that we can hear you. I, I understood that you were connected.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right.
All right. So number three, clarification of agenda items. We'll move on to item number four, information packet discussions, September 7th. We will move on to September 14th, information packet. We do have IP-5 memo from our city clerk related to listening post updates. It appears we've done three so far this year.
Yeah, just typically we do another one in November, so just looking for a couple counselors to do a listening post.
I will be more than happy to do one. I don't know if anyone is, oh, really, I guess we're, we're kind of at recycling at this point. I might propose the center, the senior center. It seemed like we haven't been there in about, probably before COVID.
That's since I've been on the council.
Anyone else? If not, we can check in with Mayor Pro Tim, although we, I mean, we both did it in May, but that'd be fine.
What, what was the date in November, or do we have one?
I would just work with the two counselors that-
I haven't done one since early this spring, so I would be willing to do it again.
Awesome. We'll connect. I do have a question. Are there any youth spaces that we can go to, just think about that for future, where youth are?
Like Dream City or something like that?
Yeah, Dream City or some space where we can engage with youth, but we'll be with our seniors first.
We could, we could, we could talk with UAY as well. I know they have a reasonable amount of space.
Yeah. So, yeah.
On the, are we on the 14th? Or are we on the-
Not yet.
No, we are.
Well, we are.
Yes, we're in September 14th, information packet.
I just had a question on the work session topics. At the bottom of the page, there is the discussion of traffic safety in Iowa City. Is that, is that in response to my request?
That was in response to your request, yes.
Okay, because I, I'd like to get together with you and maybe Kent Ralston and, and just talk about that.
Okay.
And anyone else on council if they'd like to attend?
Yeah, the, sorry, as I look at that note down, reminded what I, what I put on there. Coincidentally, the MPO issued a, finished a publication, a 10-year review of pedestrian collisions in Iowa City. So we were just going to have them present on that and then allow the council discussion to, to go from there. And we were going to include that report in the information packet immediately preceding this work session item. But what I'll do is I'll send that to you in advance, Counselor Thomas, and-
We'd schedule maybe a meeting-
Schedule a meeting to, to talk about it in, in advance, sure.
IP-6 is a good, really helpful, very dense document that I think we will inform our conversation on the formal agenda as well. But appreciated seeing that National Association of Counties Housing Solutions report. Probably need to read it four more times before I-
I also had on my notes to mention a thank you to, you know, having the extensive amount of information in the IP and those that are interested in that topic, there's just a lot there. So I spent some quality time with that over the weekend.
Hearing nothing else, we'll go on to item number five, which is, which is our University of Iowa Student Government Updates, USG. Welcome.
Hi, Counsel.
Hello.
All right. Matthew, you'll start.
Yeah. Hey, guys. So for-
So first on our announcements list is USG has, sorry, 27 new senators from fall nominations, and we're super excited to introduce ourselves to all of them and welcome them into the world of governmental relations and local politics. So that's super exciting. We're also sending out the GR platform as per recommendation by Counselor Alter, so that you guys can stay up to date on what the Governmental Relations Committee has in store for what we want to try and get done at the state level and federal level as well. But yeah, and then I'll let Noah take it from there.
Yeah, and just to add on to the last point, I kind of realized, I always, I don't remember doing this last year, though I came in in October. But I think it would just be awesome for you guys to kind of know what our GR team, and we also get large input on it of what we want to do in the city. So I guess that's like a really big way of letting you know. Kind of here's like three wins for the university recently. We had Brittany Broski, a popular TikTok influencer and podcaster, come to campus. She's large online and very big with our generation, so that was really cool. She's very down-to-earth. And also to shout out Madison Ross, who is a GR member and Senator in USG, so she helped with that a lot. With our new U.S. News and World Report, the UI College of Nursing ranked number four in the, in the United States. It went up, I believe, by two points. And of course, sports news, Hawkeyes won against Michigan, Western Michigan. But it's still also really important to note that our women's soccer team is remaining undefeated. So that's all we have. So thank you guys so much and have a good night.
Awesome. Thank you. We are on to item number six, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
Our Disability Committee met by Zoom. I don't see Rachel here. Is Rachel here? No. She led that meeting, so thank her for doing that. The group usually will have an event in October for Disability Awareness Month, but there's some sort of conflicts with Senator Harkin, who of course has been very important in the ADA field, and they want to coordinate his calendar with, with our calendar. So look for that in the future, a memo from Rachel about an event in the city, find that.
Here are no other updates. We are going to adjourn our work session, and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for our formal regulated meeting.